The City of London is committed to making every effort to provide alternate formats and communication. The council is standing in advisory committees and information upon request. Make a request for any city service, please contact accessibl.ca or...
519-661-2489, extension 2425. I'd like to advise guests, staff, and colleagues that the council will break for dinner at approximately 6:30 PM as required. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a special treat today. For the singing of our national anthem here today, I'm pleased to introduce someone whom so many of you know, London's award-winning jazz singer Sonia Gustafson. Sonia is a classically trained lyric soprano with a Masters of Music and Voice Performance from Western University's Donrhyde Faculty of Music here in London. Her collaborations with many of London's top jazz instrumentalists led to the release of her CD, her debut CD, Sonia Gustafson, in 2007, as well as a double Christmas CD released in December 2010. I know this because I bought ten of these back at that time in support of local artists, and I'll tell you, it's amazing. And what I intend to do is make a presentation of this to John Fleming. You'll find out why that's appropriate a little later on, and it's a tremendous CD. But let me tell you, Sonia also has her own opera company, Diva Lounge Productions, which produces fully staged chamber operas. Ladies and gentlemen, I would invite you all to stand as we welcome Sonia for the singing of our national anthem.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us commend. Car ton bras et portes levées, ils s'est portés la croix. Ton histoire est une épopée de plus brillantes exploits. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Sonia Gustafson, ladies and gentlemen. You know, I've come to realize, as we've done the anthems so many times with such great talent, and I've tried to think about who sings the anthem better than me, and it's actually every one of them. So, in the spirit of that, I will look for any disclosures of pecuniary interest. Counselor Anne Mirberg.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to declare a conflict on 2.3 of the first report of the Community and Protective Services Committee, which is Agenda Item 5, as my wife operates her own daycare.
Thank you. Any other disclosures? Counselor Turner.
Thank you, your worship, with respect to the first report of the Community and Protective Services, number 2.5, or Agenda, Council Agenda Number 7, Neighborhood Children and Fire Services Funding Agreement template. It relates to Bill Number 3 as well. I declare a pecuniary interest as my wife is an employee of Childreach, which is an organization which receives funding from this template. Second, with respect to Number 12, or 3.1, vaping in schools and student health, the committee received a delegation from Dr. Mackey, who's my employer, and so I declare pecuniary interest there as well.
So noted. Thank you. Any other declarations? Seeing none, colleagues, we have two recognitions that we will provide for this afternoon's meeting. And for the first one, I am going to go to the podium up front. So, colleagues, colleagues, staff, and gallery members, it's a very special day today because today we celebrate the recipients of a very important committee group of ours, the London Diversity, Race Relations, and Inclusivity Committee, the Advisory Committee. Can I tell you, though, that as part of that, we have Cash Hussain here as a representative of the Diversity, Inclusion, and Anti-Oppression Advisory Committee, and as we present a series of awards, and it's a very special time as we do that. So, Cash, thank you for being here. We appreciate that. And may I say that we recognize each group's unique contribution in promoting public awareness of diversity, anti-racism, inclusivity, and human rights in London. You know, the Universal Declaration of Human Rights was adopted on this very day, on December 10th in 1948. The date has since served to mark Human Rights Day worldwide. The City of London Diversity, Race Relations, and Inclusivity Awards are scheduled on the council meeting closest to December 10th. That's why it's particularly special that the awards be handed out today on International Human Rights Day. The awards began some twenty years ago to recognize achievements that promote public awareness and encourage ongoing initiatives on diversity, race relations, inclusivity, and human rights, and to promote London as a welcoming city. It recognizes those who help make London a safe and a welcoming place for everyone. It reminds us that we are the ones who will strengthen the community within our city. Let me congratulate all fourteen nominees of this award, a number of whom are here tonight. And how about just if I might ask for a general recognition from all for the fourteen nominees who have been so acknowledged for their great contributions to our city. Well done. So what we're going to do, Cash and I are going to make a presentation, and that presentation will be for the five recipients of the award in, of course, five different categories. These are exceptional recipients of the London Diversity, Race Relations, and Inclusivity Award, and with that goes the appreciation from all of us for making London a great city in which to live. So, in the category, small business, the recipient is Top Events Productions, producing videos and TV shows highlighting various cultures and beliefs, Hispanic, Muslim, African, French-Canadian, and Canadian writers in our London community. So I'd invite up the gentleman accepting the award, owner and producer, Jorge Herrera. Please come forward. And now we'll invite Jorge to say a few words.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, the council members, everybody here. Thank you for the committee. I'm going to tell you a brief story of what happened with Top Events Productions seventeen years ago. I was living in a small, in an apartment, a three-story building, four apartments per floor, and suddenly there's a big, this not-good smell, curry smell, very strong. All the clothes, the furniture, everything was smelling like that. So I decided to go downstairs to the first floor where the smell was coming, and to talk with the owners of that apartment. And the result was they invited me to come in and have lunch with them. So I end, I was kind of angry. And the result was that I end sitting with them in the floor, eating with them. And I exposed the issue, and they very kindly explained to me everything that happened. And at the end, what happened was the issue disappeared. That's simple. I just left the apartment, and it wasn't any more issues about the smell. The smell disappeared. I don't know why. And then I understood why. It's just understanding. So if we understand others, if we are able to get the point of how other people live, how they live their lives, and we understand that, then all the differences, all that gap that exists between cultures disappear. So that's where Top Events started. Today, we have, we've been posting more than seven shows for the Africans, the Muslims, the Arabs, the Spanish, the writers, London writers, during this period of time. You can watch this on YouTube. No advertising here. Okay, so that's basically what happened with Top Events. I'm really humbled and glad to be able to fulfill a dream of filling that gap of, to be able to bring something to the community about diversity and inclusivity and race relations, and bring, making our city a better place to live altogether. So don't worry about the smell. Something good comes out of that. Thank you very much.
Actually, I love curry. It's... Now, in the category for large business, we want to acknowledge 3M Employee Resource Group. We're responsible for creating and implementing the 3M inclusion and diversity, excuse me, and implementing the 3M Canada and Canada Inclusion and Diversity Policy and the Pride Employees Resource Group. So accepting the award from 3M, we have Katie Mennel, who is the HR Business Partner and Inclusion Manager. Katie, come on forward, please.
Well, thank you, your worship, and members of council. I'm here with my colleagues, Shobha Desharmah, who is one of our marketing supervisors, Zachary Livshin, one of our category development managers, and of course, my boss and our Human Resources Director, Greg Sweeney. So I'm thrilled to have these individuals alongside me because, I would say, because without them, this would not be possible. So 3M over the last year has not only created Diversity and Inclusion Council, but really pushed forward our employee resource groups. And we are thrilled for what our Pride Employee Resource Group has achieved in this past year, not only with involvement in the London Pride Festival, but also our allyship campaign and our Safer Spaces training. And we are thrilled to continue those initiatives into 2020. We are thrilled to not only be a part of this London community and this wonderful city that we live in and want to continue to strive to show that diversity and inclusion in all that we do. So thank you again for having us here today and recognizing us.
Colleagues, in the category of social community services not-for-profit with fewer than fifty members, we are pleased to say that the recipient is Big Bike Giveaway, and accepting the, who, by the way, collect and repair bicycles to give away for free to community residents. And accepting the award, we would invite up Monica and Shane Hodgson, who are the founders of the Big Bike Giveaway. Please come forward.
We are small. It's a husband-and-wife team for Big Bike Giveaway. So it's kind of nice that we both got to come up here together. We're into our seventh year this year giving free bikes away to Londoners. Without the support and love from the community of London, of our volunteers and sponsors and our partners, we wouldn't be able to have made it into our seventh year. Otherwise, it would have just been the two of us again. So we're very grateful, and we often spend time thinking about our environmental impact or our health impact. That's easy when you talk about cycling. So it was nice to be reminded that we have a huge social impact in London. And diversity, inclusion, human rights, bottom line, is all a part of what Big Bike does. And we're really proud of bringing the community together and removing tons and tons of barriers, whether it be health or, you know, social status or income. We eliminate all that. Yeah.
Waste.
Or waste, exactly. So thank you again, and we appreciate that. We appreciate your work.
Shane, so few words, so little time. Now, in the category of social community services not-for-profit, larger than fifty members, ladies and gentlemen, the award recipient is Community Living London, who support over 1,000 people with developmental disabilities while building an inclusive community for all, including the New Vision Advocates. Accepting the award, can I invite Anna Taverner, manager Development and Communications, please, to come forward? It looks like, looks like we have the whole family. It's all good.
Thank you, Mayor, council, and everybody else involved in this award. We greatly appreciate it. Community Living London, as the mayor said, supports over 1,000 people with developmental disabilities in this great community. We strive each and every day to ensure people have the right to live, to work, to play, and to enjoy all the aspects the community has to offer. We also employ over 500 employees in this city, which a lot of people are surprised by. We are extremely fortunate to have a very diverse group of direct support professionals, many who have immigrated to Canada from all around the world. We are not only proud of our employees, but we also benefit greatly from the different cultures that they bring to our organization, which is the fabric of what we do every day. Each one of our staff members brings something unique to the workforce, and because of that, they help us to enhance the quality of services we provide to people with disabilities. Thank you to everyone involved. We greatly appreciate it. And I'd now like to introduce you to James, who is the Chair of the New Vision Advocates.
The New Vision Advocates is an advocacy group for people with developmental disabilities. We design verse a group of people. Each of us has our own skills, knowledge, and experience to share. Because of the support we receive from a partnership with Community of London, the members of New Vision Advocates are advocating in our community and promoting inclusion and acceptance. We speak to students in the DSW program at Vanshaw College, to the students in the developmental studies program at King's College, and to the community groups. We share our own personal stories of living with a developmental disability. We advocate for the acceptance and belonging for all, and teach others about the power of words and language. of words and labels. This past summer, members of the New Vision Advocates were asked to travel to the Yukon to assist in traveling workshops for people with support to give them the tools and have their voices heard and empower them with advocacy skills.
My name is Yasmeen Khan and I am the VP Public Relations of the Western MSA.
The self-advocates movement has come a long way, but we still have a ways to go.
Alongside with me today, I have Uzair Khalid, our President, Zainal Zeek, our VP Communications,
We thank our committee for listening to the voices of people lived experiences.
and Farhan Khalid, our Strategic Initiative Director. It is an honor being here today amongst you all.
Thank you.
In the category, youth, young, adult, we are pleased to acknowledge the recipient
To London's Municipal Council, on behalf of the Western Muslim Students Association, I thank you for awarding our team with the Diversity, Race Relations and Inclusivity Award. I also would like to thank every single individual in the Western MSA for their immense dedication. None of this would have been possible without our combined efforts. Now, some of you might be wondering, wait, what did she say in the beginning?
this year, Western Muslim Student Association, promoting inclusivity and religious diversity
What is that? Well, Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh means may the peace and mercy of God be with
on campus and within the London community through initiatives and events such as Islam
you. This greeting is the very foundation of our religious belief and what we strive for
Awareness Month and Pain to Prosper, which is about welcoming newcomers to London.
as Muslim students at Western.
Accepting the award, Mohamed Uzair Khalid, President.
It reminds us to always be accepting, loving and understanding to promote individual and
Please come forward.
community growth. Originally, MSA started with focusing on the brotherhood and sisterhood amongst Western Muslim students. Through events and programs, we shared our experiences and struggles as Muslim Canadians. Over time, we realized the need of breaking misconceptions through discussions and other informative events. With this, the MSA started Islam Awareness Month, which is a series of events that aims to connect the Muslim and non-Muslim communities within our area. By addressing the elephant in the room, we hope to start a conversation about topics that are often swept under the rug. For example, we have an event called Soul Food. It is where we discuss some of the challenges our community faces, such as racism and other inequalities. When we started IAM, we created a platform on Facebook and Instagram where Muslims and non-Muslims shared impactful stories and experiences so that we may learn from each other. I encourage you all to find out more about Western MSA and Islam Awareness Month through our social media on Facebook and Instagram. As the Western MSA grows, we work tirelessly to demonstrate diversity in the best possible means. We promote diversity through partnerships with other clubs on campus, such as Feed the Future, where we have partnered with the Newman Catholic Club and Hala. We meet at the Cross Cultural Learning Center twice a semester to cook for the newcomers of Canada to demonstrate our similarity of practicing the Golden Rule, which is whatever good we wish for ourselves, we must wish that good upon others. In addition, we have our Muslims for Humanity Committee that promotes diversity of thought by empowering future Muslim leaders to take on initiatives that can help individuals in need within our Western and London community. For example, during the past two weeks, one of our Muslims for Humanity teams created a comfort drive to collect female hygiene products for the Anova Women's Shelter. Furthermore, we as Muslim Students Association are a pretty diverse group of students. We have people from all over the world that join the MSA, bringing in new ideas and perspectives to help us shine every single day. As an organization, we hope to continuously strive for a greater sense of community, a community that is accepting to all. Thank you and enjoy the rest of your evening.
Because there are no more awards for this very moment, we're going to let Cash sit down with our sincere thanks for your help, my friend. A couple of things to close this portion off. Firstly, the Diversity, Inclusion and Anti-Oppression Advisory Committee has done a great job in selecting the honorees this year. I'd like to thank Ziva, Cash, Zalea, Fay and Ian for their great work and everyone that's had a part to play in this. It really is truly and sincerely important. May I also again acknowledge all of the nominees by putting your names forward. Excuse me, please. You speak to what's most important and what the great values of London are, so we honor you, all of you, and say thank you for making London the great community that it is. Let me say that we know that the group that is around the horseshoe, and I don't mean behind me, but in front of me, on the farther edges, will be going up to the 12th floor for a reception and a number of the people in the gallery will be doing the same thing. So as you leave, please take the appreciation of London City Council and our administration for the tremendous job you've done, not only in 2019 and in years past, but our expectations going forward to make London that much stronger because of your efforts. Thank you all. Someone reminded me as I was walking past that clearly while I like curry food, it appears I like all food. So with that in mind, I'd like to now move us to the second recognition, if we can, please. And it's more somber because it marks a passing of an individual, and I don't mean passing in the literal sense, but moving on of a dear friend of ours and a great contributor to the city, our dear friend John Fleming. And I'm going to start by asking, before you get the CD, by the way, I'm going to be asking our City Manager, Martin Hayward, if you would say a few words, please.
Well, thank you, Your Worship, and I got to say, John, you caught us off guard when you announced that you were going to be leaving and it's taken my breath away right now, I'll tell you that. But I know on the senior leadership team, we're going to miss him. John is known for being a visionary and I think that's well-recognized. His innovation and his desire to see London move forward will be missed, missed by the City of London, missed by the senior leadership team. He's often challenged many of his colleagues around the SLT table with a perspective that others may not have had on particular issues and it's often led to a better product as a result. And also, I always note that John is about the first person to thank people for their work. In fact, whenever we have a presentation, John is, that's probably one of the things that I'll remember most, is he's always first out there to say thank you and recognize especially his staff. And I know his staff think the world of him and are going to miss him, as are we. So on behalf of the senior leadership team, John, we really want to wish you well and we are really going to miss you. So thank you.
I'd like to call on Deputy Mayor Jesse Homer.
Thank you, Your Worship, and I said I was going to save my remarks at Planning Committee for council, so buckle up. I want to say, you know, I've had the pleasure of working with John, this is coming into the sixth year, and, you know, we did five full years where I was on Planning Committee. And I have to say that I have been really impressed with your work over the years. And I want to just recognize how long your career has been. I don't want to draw too much attention to your age, but when you started as a student at Western, you know, one London place was not even under construction. The City of London was sub 300,000 people when John was a student in urban development at Western. When he started at the City of London, the 1989 official plan was brand spanking new, the newest and best thing in planning. And I think we can see over the years, all the things that have happened over those decades, and you can see John's hands on a lot of those, a lot of those things and a lot of the really important stuff. Planning is a small department within the city, it's a small service area, but it really has a big impact and the impacts go way out into the future. And I know in terms of the London Plan, I know that's probably the crowning achievement, this is the big thing. I know it's not quite all in force and effect yet, but it will be soon. And I want to say to John, thanks for your leadership on that. The integration of land use and mobility, getting the engineers and the planners to really collaborate to come up with something amazing, I think that's a really great outcome for the London Plan. I know it's going to pay off in our city for decades to come. I want to say, Martin already mentioned it, and I think as councillors, we only have a little bit of a window into what goes on at the staff level, but I know as a colleague, you're not only very busy with your own things, but you're always willing to help people out when they need help in their area. I know you put your hand up a lot to help people out with things that they need. I know your staff, I really admire you, staff who work for you now and people who've moved on to other things. You should be really proud of the great people who've come up in your organization, who've learned from you and are doing great things either here at the city or in other places. And I want to just end on something that's kind of personal and a bit more specific to my award, which is John is responsible for the Planners' Action Team and a lot of the great work that happened in Old East Village in the early 90s. Work that has gone on for decades and has really proven to be an amazing collaboration between the community that was leading what was going on and planning. And John personally was involved in that work. And I think the lasting relationships that he has with people in that community, to this day, shows the value that he puts on community engagement, the way community engagement can be done very, very well. And I think it's proved to be a model, not just for other service areas in the city, but other cities all over the province and the country. How to do this stuff properly, how to do it in a way that's effective, how to work with community in a way that really pays off in the long term. So I don't know what you're going to do next, but I wish you all the best. You've done a great job up to this point. We expect great things in the future.
Thank you, Your Worship. I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to say some words about Mr. Fleming. As you may know, prior to my time here on council, I spent nine years on the Environmental and Ecological Planning Advisory Committee, where I kind of cut my teeth on planning matters. Later, once on council last term, having the chance to be the Chair of the Planning Committee, too. I could say unequivocally, my knowledge of planning matters is in no small part because of how much I've been able to learn from John. And I would say that not only me, but also the community, too. So I wrote down some stuff and so I'm going to try and follow my really crazy maze here. But I can say with confidence that John is held in incredibly high regard amongst his peers, not only here, but across the country. I've had the opportunity to travel to a couple of conferences where I talk with city planners from Canada-wide and the amount of respect they hold for him and the elevation of London's status in the planning realm on the national stage is absolutely attributable to John and his work and his work in the planning community on Canada-wide. As everybody talks, we hear a lot about John's vision and I think that's probably right at the core of what's made him so successful as our Chief Planner. That vision has been shared throughout his team, throughout council and throughout the community. In fact, through the London Plan process, not only did he get people inspired about where our city could go, but also got them involved and collaborated to be able to write the London Plan in such a way that reflected the aspirations and dreams of tens of thousands of Londoners and where we could grow and build as a city. So as I said, not only was I, did I have the opportunity to learn from John, I continued to be inspired by him. And I think that's going to be a big hole and I'm going to miss that. And I really hope we continue to have the opportunity to touch base and collaborate and talk. And I'm fascinated to see where you go next. I envy where you go next because the amount of energy and ideas and aspirations that you're going to bring to whatever you do, they're very fortunate. So thank you so much for your time here and thank you for lending yourself to us for all these years and good luck.
Thank you, and I will be brief because I did speak at the Planning Committee, but I just wanted to take a few moments to say, first of all, I'm not going to talk about how far back John goes because we were born the same year, so that's a really bad place to go. I didn't know, we must have been at Western at the same time and I was in the French Department, so I wouldn't have crossed paths with you then. But I just want to say, London definitely is a better place for having John Fleming here all these years. If you look at every major plan, people often talk about how many plans London has, and we do, we have a lot of plans and they are really good plans. And every single one of them has John's stamp on them. Some of the more recent ones would be the Core Area Action Plan, the Urban Design Manual, the, all of the secondary plans throughout the city, some of them that are in progress right now, Climate Emergency Action Plan, and especially culminating in the big daddy of them all, the London Plan. It could very easily be called the Fleming Plan, but I know John wouldn't agree to that because like every great leader, John is extremely humble. And John is always willing, not just willing, eager to give credit to the people that he works with, the people that have contributed, whether it's his own team members, his own people working under him, or the rest of the divisions in the City of London, the other members of the senior leadership team, the other employees from all of the different areas that come together often to work together on these big plans because it takes a whole corporation to raise a plan at the City of London and that's a very good thing. The first time I met John was way back in 2010 and he was introduced to be by the other great person from the City of London, it's just Joni Beckler. And Joni was a great admirer of John. She would want me to pass on her best wishes for your future and all of her best thoughts of all of the things that John has contributed to the city. We didn't always agree. We often disagreed forcefully, me more forcefully than him, because John is always the consummate gentleman. But I always agreed with his vision. I always believed in his vision and it will be sorely missed here in London. So thank you so much, John.
Councillor Squire.
I wanted to speak because I don't want to talk about John the Planner, because John and I have actually known each other a long time. So I want to talk about hockey, John, kids hockey. John and I first met when I was looking for a team to play my son's team at what was then the JLC. And somebody said, call this guy Fleming over West. And so I did and John put together a team, which I got to say, he stacked a little bit, I think. I've forgotten that, John. And we played a game at the John Lebat Centre and it was really good. And then afterwards, John invited our team to play in a tournament that he organized through his busy at the rink and my kids came out and we had a great day with John organizing that. And we continued to run into each other as hockey parents in our mutual arenas and we were the two teams that always ended up playing each other in the finals. And I think it's important that, you know, you can imagine what I'm like as a hockey parent, from the way I am otherwise. John is the perfect hockey parent. I would always go and talk to him and he was always in that frame of mind of being very reasonable, very polite and very understanding of what was going on from a big picture point of view. And I had a chance to see John interact with his family, his wife, his kids, and I was really impressed with that. And that's the kind of consistency that I think is really admirable in a person, that the way you treat people in your private life, your public life, is really very much the same and John Fleming has that quality. He's been, he and I have disagreed, but I think we're still friends, John, aren't we? Yes. And I really have enjoyed...
because John and I have actually known each other a long time. So I want to talk about hockey, John, kids' hockey. John and I first met when I was looking for a team to play my son's team at what was then the JLC. And somebody said, call this guy Fleming over West. And so I did. And John put together a team, which I got to say, he stacked a little bit, I think. I've forgotten that, John. And we played a game at the John Lebat Centre. It was really good. And then afterwards, John invited our team to play in a tournament that he organized through his busy at the rink. And my kids came out. And we had a great day with John organizing that. And we continued to run into each other as hockey parents in our mutual arenas. And we were the two teams that always ended up playing each other in the finals. And I think it's important that, you know, you can imagine what I'm like as a hockey parent from the way I am otherwise. John is the perfect hockey parent. I would always go and talk to him. And he was always in that frame of mind of being very reasonable, very polite, and very understanding of what was going on from a big picture point of view. And I had a chance to see John interact with his family, his wife, his kids. And I was really impressed with that. And that's the kind of consistency that I think is really admirable in a person, that the way you treat people in your private life, your public life, is really very much the same. And John Fleming has that quality. He's been, he and I have disagreed, but I think we're still friends, John, aren't we? Yes. And I really have enjoyed that time. And frankly, I'm going to miss John the person much more than I will miss John the Planner. And I want him to know that. That's really important to me because you don't meet many people in life that you have that kind of relationship with. So John, good luck. All the best with your hockey enterprises, with your family. And all the best to your family. Having met them, I know they will be 100% behind you. So thank you.
Councillor Lewis.
Thank you, Your Worship. Mr. Fleming, we haven't had a chance to work together for a very long time. But I have learned a lot from you in that short time and our opportunity to have some discussions about housing and about bike lanes in my ward. And already, it has been an enlightening experience to see what goes into some of the work that you have done. And that work will continue for many years ahead with this council, with councils to follow, with the people who succeed you. And I just want to say thank you. Thirty-plus years is not a short amount of time. I won't hold it against you that you are a West hockey parent. We all know that the Bandits Association is the superior one. But I hope I will perhaps get to see you at a rink because certainly there will be some new rinks built thanks to some of the work that you've done with Parks and Rec. And I hope we'll see you there when we celebrate that opening.
Thank you. Councillor Hopkins.
Thank you, Your Worship, for allowing me to speak again. And I won't go in length. I had an opportunity, and I was in shock at that time. And I'm getting better. But I am going to miss you big time. I knew you when you were young, going back quite a while. And I have always, always respected you. Your vision for this city will, there's no words for what you have given our city. That vision, the community engagement through the London Plan, all of that was something that cannot be taken lightly. And I want to thank you for your generosity and for always being there and for giving back to our city. So thank you.
So she remembers you when you were young. That means you are, oh, sorry, Councillor Van Hols, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Our council's witness to Mr. Fleming's vision and his plans. And I just want to remind people that they have become gratifying physical realities. When I wanted to make a difference in my neighborhood and eventually did with supportive council, it was because I turned to Mr. Fleming and said, what can we do? And he gave me the ideas. And at this point, I can actually put my hands on the things that were his initial suggestions and say, this happened, and this happened, and this happened. And it's great to see it. Our community is thrilled. John, thank you.
So colleagues, if I may, I think it's only appropriate, as I mentioned, that I was going to be providing this double disc set of our National Anthem Singer today, a local amazing jazz singer, Sonja Gustafson. But there's two things about this, John, that I think are very appropriate. Firstly, it's a Christmas holiday series of songs, which is appropriate for the season. And also, in terms of your next adventure, or at least your downtime, it's entitled Comfort and Joy. So with all of that, please come forward, take a bow, know that we all appreciate the gift of you.
Colleagues, I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting held November 26. Councillor Kayabaka, second to Mr. Leman, any discussion? Then I'll call the question.
Mr. Mayor. Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to zero.
Thank you, colleagues. Item six, communications and petitions, tow truck operator license bylaw. Ask that that be referred to Community and Protective Services Committee stage for consideration with items 13, 3, 2 of the first report of the Community and Protective Service Committee. I would look for a mover to refer the communication. Councillor Hillier, seconded by Councillor Van Meerbergen. Call the vote.
Councillor Squire? Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to zero.
Thank you. There are no motions to which notice is given, so I'll turn your attention to the reports, the first report of the Community and Protective Services Committee. Councillor Lewis.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you, I will put the first report of the Community and Protective Services Committee on the floor with the exception of five, seven, and twelve, which colleagues have indicated conflicts on. Item five is for Councillor Van Meerbergen, and seven and twelve are for Councillor Turner. And colleagues, I will just draw to your attention at the committee meeting, we did have a presentation from staff on the housing stability plan. Thanks to Ms. Dagers Beer and her team for providing that. And if you're interested in reviewing it, you can, of course, find that on our YouTube stream.
Do colleagues wish any other items separated for individual discussion? Comments overall? All right, thank you. Any other items to be pulled for consideration? So we have the consent agenda with the exception of items five, seven, and twelve. I'll look for discussion on any of those with the exception of those three. Councillor Van Meerbergen.
Yeah, if you could pull thirteen.
So noted. Thank you. Thirteen is also pulled. Anything else to be pulled before we have discussion on the consent items? See no other, I think. Noting that, any comments or discussion on those items independent of five, seven, twelve, thirteen? Councillor Squire?
I had a chance to comment on the housing stability plan at the last meeting, but I wanted to add something that's happened since, which is encouraging to me. People have approached me, and they're not just talking about the plan and the fact we're moving forward, they're commenting very positively on the conversation they are having with the City of London in terms of the flexibility, the desire to listen to what people, whether they're in the private sector or public sector, have to say about the path moving forward. And I think that's really encouraging, that people are taking the time to do that. And I think that confirms that what we did by removing some silos in terms of some of our boards and sort of consolidating was the right approach. So I think it's important, and I wanted to mention that today.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Councillor Hopkins.
Yes, Your Worship, I just want to make a comment on number seven and also on...
We'll come to that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Number eight and the... I've got my numbers all mixed up here.
So the items that have been pulled are five, seven, twelve, and thirteen, so item eight for sure.
Eight, and then also the acknowledgement of number ten, which is the Jane Bigelow pathway.
Floor is yours.
Yes, thank you. And I just want to thank the committee, first of all, for extending the agreement with the Hough and Puff. As we become an aging community, I do hear from seniors the need to exercise and get out and have opportunities, and of course, the challenges of seniors being on fixed income. So I really think this is great that we've got this agreement for another four years. I do want to make a comment on the request for renaming a portion of the Thames Valley Parkway system and naming it the Jane Bigelow Pathway. And first of all, to acknowledge, the first woman mayor of the City of London is so important. And I have met the former mayor a couple times, and for me, she has been... She represented a lot of strength and fortitude, not only mentally, but also physically. I still recall pictures of her when she was the mayor riding a bike. And all those things just kind of stick in my mind, and you never forget that. And she has given, you know, all of us an example on moving around the city in different modes. To me, she was a modern woman, and still is today, even at the age of 90. So I think this is great. Her name will be acknowledged along with the Terry Fox Parkway and the Wolf Parkway, and of course, the Maurice Chapman Parkway, which is in Springbank Park. So really glad to see this move forward.
Thank you, Councillor. Any other comments? Deputy Mayor Helmer.
Briefly on the housing stability plan, I'm really glad to see this report come forward. I think it's hitting the right areas of focus, and I think that we've responded very quickly. I think when you look at how quickly the plan came together, the needs assessment happens, the consultation, and I think that's a recognition of the urgency of what's going on, especially when it comes to homelessness, and the need to act quickly, in a well-informed and smart way, but also to move quickly when we can and where we can. I think this is laying the groundwork and the foundation for advocacy at the provincial level and at the federal level. I know Councillor Hopkins and Councillor Morgan, in particular, are leading the city's advocacy at AMO and FCM along with the mayor. And I think this is going to be very clear for the province and the federal government when we need their help on these fronts, what our priorities really are in the four areas we're really focusing, not just homelessness, which is obviously critically important, but expanding the housing stock, providing housing with supports. And so I think that that's a really good step forward. I want to commend our staff and all the community stakeholders who participate in the development of the plan. I know it's not easy, and I think we've cut to the good outcome.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions with respect to the pulled items, Councillor Morgan, or non-pulled items, excuse me, consent agenda?
Yes, I'll just, I'll be brief, because Councillor Hopkins said all the good stuff about the renaming of the pathway in honor of former mayor Jane Bigelow. I did want to recognize the work that her children, Anne and David, did in the preparation of this application. They approached me early on in this to ask for assistance in navigating the process. It was about a year that we went through, so certainly the naming of a pathway is no easy thing to do, and it requires a lot of work, research, and navigation of finding the right and appropriate recognition through the staff. And so I wanted to recognize their work. I know certainly their mother knows what they've done, but really, these things are... This was one that was driven by community. I was happy to assist with, and I think an appropriate recognition. Any former mayor who can get the PUC, the Public Utilities Commission, to like, do stuff, like, because I sat on the Public Utilities Commission, we didn't really do anything besides have meetings and talk about our assets and liabilities. But she got to do stuff back in the day and really started the network of a trail system that is one of the jewels of London. So quite an accomplishment and a worthy recognition.
It's too bad Deputy Helmer has already spoken, because I'm sure he'd like to weigh back in on this, but any other comments or questions? This is a wrap on that. All right, this is the consent agenda. I will turn your attention to the screen as we vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to zero.
Councillor Lewis.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you, I will put item five on the floor. This is the third report of the Childcare Advisory Committee, and this is an item that Councillor Van Meerbergen indicated conflict on.
Any comments or questions? See none? I'll call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries fourteen with one recuse.
Councillor Lewis.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you, I will put items seven and twelve on the floor at the same time. I believe it's just a conflict for Councillor Turner on this, unless colleagues want to deal with these separately.
Is there a wish for these to be dealt with separately? See none? Comments or questions? This is seven and twelve together? Call the vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries fourteen with one recuse.
Councillor Lewis.
Thank you, Your Worship, and I will put item thirteen on the floor. This was requested to be pulled by Councillor Van Meerbergen. This is the Tow Truck Operator License Business Bylaw, draft law bylaw. Colleagues, I'll just give you a little bit of context before we deal with this matter. The Community and Protective Services Committee had a public participation meeting on this item at our last meeting. We heard from tow truck operators with their concerns. I want to draw colleagues' attention to the fact that this bylaw does not deal with the police contract. That is a matter for the Police Services Board, not for council to make a decision on. And the committee's direction was to refer this back to staff to tighten up a little bit of the language, clean up a couple of issues that tow truck operators did raise with us. But by and large, we didn't hear any objection to the licensing that's proposed by our staff. The concerns, by and large, were around the police contract, although there was some feedback, particularly from operators, around, for example, firefighters asking them to take action on scene before police are there, and how that needs to be addressed in the bylaw language. So that's what we referred back to staff, and we expect to see that come back late first quarter or early second quarter of 2020.
So Chair, I want to be clear through you that we're asking that this be referred back, and there will be an opportunity for council to have this discussion once we actually know what's going to come back and what is put in front of us.
That's correct, Your Worship. This is a referral to staff at this point. We are not asking council to move forward with a bylaw at this time.
Comments or questions? Councillor Van Meerbergen.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm generally in support of the referral bag. As I spoke before, when this issue first came up, this is a very important industry for all Londoners and for the city as a whole. I mean, at any time, any of us may need the services of a tow truck. So we want a healthy, vibrant industry that can service us properly. I know in my own experience, the various companies that I've dealt with have been respectful, professional, able to do the job. But I think where the problem lies is what was just actually stated by the Chair. And although we don't have direct control over the Police Services Board, we can give our opinion and voice our concern. And the concern is, this model that they're following, in terms of elevating one company over another, in effect giving them work over and above other companies, I think is a recipe to weaken the industry. And I think as it goes, it's going to get worse. All these companies compete with each other, and they do so, again, for the betterment of all Londoners. But by elevating a company over another for a period of five years, in the end, is a disadvantage to all of us. And I think we need to express to our representatives at the Police Services Board that this particular model needs to change. Perhaps look at something where it's rotating, perhaps weekly between companies or monthly, but a five-year exclusivity contract where one is basically authorized over others, I think is a wrong approach. And I think we're well in our rights to express that viewpoint.
Thank you. Councillor Squire.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I just, I want to try to clarify what we were talking about at the committee and what the concerns are, because quite frankly, I don't think it's been represented correctly right now. The concern of the tow truck operators is the toes that are not within the purview of the City of London police contract. In other words, if the police want to contract with someone to take impounded vehicles, vehicles they've seized, they want to make a contract with a company to do that, who they believe can do it properly, that is within their rights. The concern is really around the accident where the person, they're not impounding the vehicle, and the question of choice that that person has to contact a tow company and contract with them. And that is the concern and what the industry is talking about. And really, I think what we're doing here is we're thinking a bylaw is going to solve a problem that it's not going to solve. In other words, a problem could easily be solved if we dealt with Councillor Saleh, who is very helpful, not usually very helpful, but he's really helpful at committee in separating those two out and making it clear that there are discussions going on right now at the police service about better handling those non-contractual, if I might call them, calls. I would suggest that that's a great way to go. And if eventually we got to a point where the police were saying, "Look, we don't have an interest in this vehicle, here's a list of licensed operators you can call, please get in touch with them, no bylaw, let's just, you know, we can do it that way." So I really want to make sure that we're focused on the issue at hand, which is those non-police-controlled toes that the industry feels they should have a fair opportunity. Now, the issue of people who run around the city using police scanners to chase accidents, that's a whole other issue that is an issue of safety. But I would point out that we don't enforce that bylaw because it's an accident sort of bylaw. We'd have to rely on police to do that, and goodness knows, police have enough to do already. So I just want us to be careful in what we are discussing. And again, it was really great to have Councillor Saleh, I'm going to give you a shout out again, at the committee as a Police Services Board member who could give us really up-to-date information on what was going on.
Thank you. I think that was a compliment. Councillor Saleh, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Councillor Squire. I know you don't usually give me too many positive comments, but I'll take them when I can get them. I don't have to say much, because Councillor Squire really summarizes it very well. I just wanted us, as we were having these discussions, remember that the police board really tries to do their best when dealing with these contracts. Prior to me sitting on the police board, Councillor Turner sat on the police board and dealt with previous contracts. And I don't think, and not speak for him, but I think it's fair to say that none of, not me or him, are sitting there trying to decide who should be elevated over one other organization or one other business. That's not the intent. I think to say that, I didn't want to leave that unchecked, so I just wanted to kind of, you know, my colleagues across are always welcome to share their perspectives and opinions, but I just wanted to remind everyone around here and the members of the public that that's not the intent. The City of London has many contracts with other various stakeholders who have just sole contracts, and that's kind of done across the country and across the province. So it's not unusual. I think the reality is, we have to remember that we don't want to tie up police resources. They're very stretched, thin already. They're a significant part of our budget. But I hear you. We'll continue to do the best we can moving forward and look forward to the future conversations.
Thank you. Councillor Lehman.
Thank you, Your Worship. I, too, am concerned about a dominant player in any industry in our town, but I understand that that is an issue for the board with Police Commission, so I won't go into that. Whenever cities or governments get into the business of regulating business, there has to be caution. Foremost is, we want to preserve competition. Competition benefits small business, men and women that are out hustling to provide an income for their families, that grow employment in our town. So I would look to any bylaws that we will work on to not only stifle competition, but to enhance competition. And I think the idea of a license, for example, is one way in that direction, where we can acknowledge true professional operators to enhance business that's going in the right direction, and also to provide... also to provide clear direction to the first responders, the fire and the police, to give them clear direction on what communication should be presented to customers of towing services. You know, those, the police and the fire carry a great deal of weight in their position, and consumers at that time, it's a traumatic moment, so they're apt to listen to direction provided by the people in uniform. So I would respectfully ask that the crafters of this bylaw look for ways to address direction given by first responders, and other ways that competition, true competition, would be allowed to proceed in a way that's safe for all traffic and getting flow of traffic and just personal safety for London.
Thank you. Counselor Van Holst.
Thank you, your worship. The risks of establishing any bylaw or the unintended consequences, and that's the value that we saw with the public participation meeting is we find out that there are some tow truck operators for which this bylaw shouldn't even apply, particularly those who aren't looking to tow vehicles from an accident scene but are perhaps at a wrecking yard where they're only moving vehicles internally. And they came and said, "Why should, why should we have to pay a fee for this or be regulated?" So those are some of the things that are going to be looked at in this review. And I put my thanks out to those people who participated in that meeting from the public.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, back to you, Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, your worship. So colleagues, I'm going to take a minute here just to comment myself on some of the discussion we've heard. Of course, you know that this was an issue that I initiated some work on. Counselor Van Holst is absolutely right when he references making sure that we are not catching those businesses who are, for example, towing internal to their business. That was never the intent of this bylaw, and we don't want to add extra work for them and an extra licensing regime just for that. With regard to Counselor Squire's comments about, you know, we might not need a bylaw, we could just have police present a list of licensed companies. Well, without a business license bylaw, we won't have a list of licensed companies. And that's one of the reasons that we do need to move forward on this, by having the companies who are operating legitimately in London go through a licensing regime where they're bringing forward their driver abstracts and their background checks before they're eligible to receive their license. And something that none of the operators who attended the PPM objected to, will help us be able to assure people that they are being towed by a company that's licensed by the City of London to provide that tow. So these are all things that we will consider moving forward. You know, I would say to colleagues, we also saw from video that was presented, a tow truck passing at a high rate of speed, another tow truck that had been called to the scene, and then running a four-way stop to try and get to an accident scene sooner. That happens, and it happens pretty regularly. So we also heard, and we'd heard through feedback as well, through this process in developing this bylaw, and particularly from law enforcement, that some of the tow trucks that are a problem in this city aren't operating in this city. It's not the companies with business offices here in the city that are causing these problems. It's the tow trucks that are sitting on the side of the 401 in Veterans Memorial or the 401 in Wellington and monitoring scanners and running in. And then after they tow the vehicle, it's being stored in Dorchester or Woodstock or wherever these people happen to take it to, not necessarily in London where residents can easily collect it afterwards and deal with that process. So that's something that we're trying to work on through this process. Of course, everyone's welcome to come to committee and comment on it. We will have this return with some strength in language from our staff and with the input of the towing industry. So we'll look forward to seeing what comes back to us later or early in 2020.
Thank you, Counselor Lewis. I'll remind colleagues that, again, as you look at what we're voting on, that this be referred back to Civic Administration, be dealt with, and reported back to us no later than Q 2020, and also receive certain communications. So with that, we'll call the vote.
Closing the vote, the motion carries fourteen to one.
Thank you, Chair. We now turn to the first report of the Corporate Services Committee. Chair, Counselor Kayabaga.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to put the report, the first report of the Corporate Service Committee on the floor. And I'd like to mention that Michael Van Holst has been elected to be the Vice Chair of the Committee. And special mention to the work policy, respectful workplace policy as well, which is a lot of work that staff did to make it much more clear and to make considerable recommended changes. And the policy also says that it will be reviewed as often as it needs to be reviewed, so great job on that. And I have not heard from anyone if I should pull anything on the agenda.
Thank you, Chair. Does anyone wish something pulled? Counselor Van Holst for discussion.
Yes, if we would pull number six, item 4.1.
Thanks very much. Any other items colleagues wish to have dealt with separately? Moved by the Chair, any comments or questions with respect to items one through five? Seeing none, we'll call the vote.
Closing the vote, the motion carries fifteen to zero.
Counselor Kayabaga.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to put item 6.1, which is the issuance of proclamation policy, on the floor.
Any comments or questions? Counselor Van Holst.
Thank you, your worship. I am voted against this item at the committee. Being everything to everyone is not the plan I think our council needs to have. I think we should be able to set some things aside and say, "We just have more pressing matters to deal with." There are organizations which are proclamation-less, and there's also people who are homeless in the city. And when I look at those two issues, I realize that one is more pressing than the other. And I want to make sure that we're not sending resources to non-priority places when we've got a lot of work ahead of us. So for that reason, I'm going to vote against this item.
Thanks very much. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, your worship. And through you, although I'm not a member of this committee, I did attend and speak against sending a referral right now. I supported the staff recommendation. But I also understand why Counselor Kayabaga brought this forward, and I think that this is actually landing in a good spot where we're going to look at what Toronto's doing. Through you, I did have a question for our staff with regard to looking similar to the policy of the City of Toronto. Is that limiting the scope of what you're going to bring back, only to what Toronto's doing? I know you've done some research into this before, so have we already brought some ideas from other municipalities into what we might include in a draft policy?
Why don't we ask the clerk for her thoughts on that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we are looking at Ottawa, Branton, and a number of other municipalities. So what we're proposing to bring forward won't be exactly Toronto, but it will be Toronto with a bit of Ottawa in it.
Counselor Lewis.
Well, not that I don't love my leaf, your worship, but I did want to make sure that good ideas from elsewhere in the province might be included in the draft policy that came back to us. So I appreciate staff's response on that. One other quick question on this, I will be supporting this referral, but I did wonder if in coming back, will we have any information about any recent number of, like when we look at Toronto specifically, will we know if there have been human rights complaints or a high number of rejections? I don't necessarily care how many they've rejected, but if they've received, you know, if their acceptance percentage is like eighty percent or something like that, would there be any chance of getting that information, or is that just not available to us?
Clerk.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We do have information that, from both Ottawa and Toronto, that they have rejected some applications. I don't have the exact numbers. I can see if it's easy for them to pull that information together, but both have indicated that there are, they have received proclamations that they have rejected.
Counselor Lewis.
Thank you. I think it would just be helpful to know if they're rejecting like fifty percent of the applications they get. That would be good to know. But if it's five percent, then obviously it's less of a concern. So if it's possible, that's great, understanding that we would be relying on them to provide that information. So that was my only question.
Thank you. Counselor Morgan.
Yes, I just wanted to weigh in at council on this through the Chair. Because of the committee, I said I would vote to approve it through the committee level, think about it until council. At the time during the committee debate, I made the comment that I wasn't too sure about this because I didn't want us to have a proclamation policy as a token, check-off-the-box approach to recognizing what should be significant events recognized in a meaningful way in the city. Between the committee meeting and today, I had the opportunity to speak with a number of groups. I appreciate Counselor Kayabaga connecting me with a few about what a proclamation would mean to them. And so to look at this from the perspective of the value for those who would be on the receiving end of it, it was a very illuminating discussion, and I'm very supportive of this, moving to the next level to see what a policy would look like. And so I just wanted to make those remarks today because of my comments at the committee.
Thank you. Counselor Squire.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make it clear, though, that although I'm contented to move on to the stage of drafting something, I'm hesitant in saying at this point in time that it's something I would support. Being, because of my training, I'm more worried about not the good work it will do, but people who may come to us who are not doing work that the council may generally approve of, who still want a proclamation, who still say, "I'd like a proclamation because you gave it to someone else." I worry about that, so I'm going to reserve final judgment until I actually see the bylaw.
Counselor Lehman.
While I respect the intent of this, and I agree with this, my concern also, as some counselors have mentioned, is the unintended consequences. I'm glad we're looking at other communities and seeing what they've experienced, because that will help us see some of the consequences that maybe we haven't thought of. My, looking down the road, as well, I can see merit, I'm sure, in many of the proclamations. I'm concerned that there would be at some point a time to make a moral judgment. And I think that that's what happened in the past with the City of London. And once we're faced with a moral judgment, then we open the door to Human Rights Tribunal. And it's going to be a hard position for this council or the mayor, depending on where this falls, to make that call if it is a moral judgment. So I have caution. I'm going to support this, but I want to hear more about how other cities have handled those concerns, because it could be a Pandora's Box that we open.
Thank you. Counselor Plaza.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to this. And I have been reading through the reports. While I recognize some individuals, it would mean, mean a lot to them, no doubt. I share the concerns of legal ramifications that we might be opening up ourselves to. Concern with the report outlining Edmonton, for example, has one hundred and fifty to one hundred and eighty requests per year, and they have dedicated staff to do this. Wondering through you to staff, do we have adequate staff, or is this going to be an added position that we're going to have to add, or if that information's going to come back in the report?
Let's ask the clerk.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It will be a challenge. The same individual that is reviewing the flag requests will be looking at the proclamations, plus the lighting of the buildings, plus dealing with all of the appeals that the hearings officers do, plus the other work. She will be very stretched, so that's something we'll be reviewing and coming back with a potential recommendation for additional staff personnel.
Counselor.
Thank you, your worship. And I guess a follow-up question is that, definitely we'd like to know the monetary implications in staffing that may or may not be required on best case versus worst-case scenario of the inundation of them. Also wondering as well if, being mindful of which way we may or may not go, of who declares these proclamations of the person who has to proclaim them as well. There are time allotments, if it's the mayor issuing them versus the clerk, of just, does everyone have potentially that much time to designate to this, to make sure that we are doing the proclamations that would serve Londoners and be inclusive the best. So I look forward to report coming back to discuss those.
I think that's fair. And if I might respond, since that was partially directed to the mayor's office, that it will be, the work behind the scenes will be done by the clerk and that office, and declarations with respect to any proclamation would, that'll be determined by council, whether that be council-voted, mayor-determined. But I think that'll come back in terms of the recommendations, or some of the input that we receive from the clerk as that research is done. Counselor Turner.
Thank you, your worship. I'll support the recommendation here. I think it's appropriate. One of the challenges is we have a whole host of methods of recognizing events within the community, whether that be building lightings, flag raisings, just general communications. Proclamations, perhaps in some ways might be semantic, in other ways might be wholesome weight and impact. As I recognize, most of this seemed to have come forward from, and is still being held, pending a decision here on the celebration and observance of Black History Month. And I think at the heart of that, I hope we can get back to that part, because I think that's something, at its root, was a question of whether there was enough substance and enough weight in the observance by the city of Black History Month. And whether it's proclamation or having a more robust observance, we need to be able to finish one conversation so that, and I hope staff are concurrently working on other methods by which we can really help to elevate Black History Month. It's one that's recognized federally, and it's something that we can certainly put more effort to here at the municipal level as well.
Thank you. Counselor Van Mirbergen.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm prepared to see the report come back. But I think we all have to be realistic about this whole effort to declare a proclamation policy, because I think, as we can all appreciate, most of these groups that come forward are wonderful, and we can all support them, and they deserve proclamations. But I think we can also appreciate the fact that there are groups out there that many of us would find distasteful, and they are going to come forward and want the same treatment. And if we don't give them the same treatment, then we open ourselves up to Human Rights Commission challenges, perhaps legal challenges in the courts. So I have a question for the clerk, and that is, with these cities that have proclamation policies in place now, have they had much activity in terms of human rights challenges or court actions for those who have been denied? Know that information?
To the clerk.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We will include that information in the report. We are specifically asking the municipality side question.
Counselor.
Okay. Thank you very much. No, but again, I think we all have to have our eyes wide open when we go down this road. And I look forward to the information coming back, and we can make a more clarified position then. Thank you.
Counselor Saleh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you for my colleagues who've already spoken, and thank you for Counselor Kayabaga for bringing this forward in the past. I know she's been working on this since the summer, if not earlier. So I think it shouldn't be no surprise that we're trying to get this moving and trying to make something happen. I know Counselor Turner touched on the fact that Black History Month is coming up very soon. This is essentially our last meeting, and come February, we'll have that opportunity to celebrate. You know, I do want to push back when we hear comments like, "There's more pressing matters. It's maybe not a priority." I think people need to really kind of take a time to reflect and look at the history that London has had, historic before us and councils time and time before us, have not always been perceived well outside of communities that don't look like everyone around this horseshoe or the majority of the members around this horseshoe. And I think what we're trying to achieve here is to recognize some of those historic wrongs and to move forward and to bring everyone together and create an inclusive community. When we have diversity plans, we have diversity offices, and we have all these other things, this is an integral piece. I think London has had a I think London has had a gap because of some historic bumps. And I think this is an opportunity for us to catch up and do right by our community and the communities that we hope to invite and welcome into the city. I think when I go to other cities like in Brampton and Toronto and they do these proclamations, and it's really almost not even a conversation really, it just happens because they're just there and they understand the importance and the significance. So it is a priority, and I could tell you it is a priority. It's a priority for me. I know when I've talked to Counselor Kayabaga, it's a priority for her. And I know when I've talked to other members around this horseshoe, it's a priority for them. So I could say that there's already a handful of members around this horseshoe that feel it's an important thing, and I think we need to do it. So I look forward to when it comes back. And I recognize that we can continue to be risk averse and worry about being sued for this and that. That's what happens in this municipality. That's why we have a big legal team, you know, as a police board member. That's why we have a big budget item when it comes to lawsuits and things like that. That's part of the nature of the work we do. We can't continue to make policy because we're afraid that we might upset people who we don't agree with and who are people who do things that are wrong. I don't care about those folks who have those negative perceptions of the rest of Londoners and the people that we want to serve. My goal is to serve the greater good of this community, and I think the intent is to make that positive step. So I hope when this comes back, and I hope that report comes, everyone around this horseshoe won't want to be risk averse and want to do what's in the best interest of our community and to ensure that we send a positive message to every Londoner, whether they're a student in high school, whether at University of Western, or whether there are people considering to move into the city and wanting to feel like they're welcome there in this community. So it is a priority and it is important. And you know what? We do spend a lot of time talking about other things sometimes and wasting energy and resources in other areas that maybe we shouldn't have put so much time and effort in, but I think this is an important thing. So I encourage my colleagues to support this and when it comes back so that we have this ready in place for February.
So thanks very much. We certainly will have that opportunity to re-review this, but to call for a wrap, I'll turn it back to Counselor Kayabaga.
Thank you. Through you, Chair. I'd just like to thank my colleagues for the different comments that they've shared. I understand all of the concerns that my colleagues have around this specific policy and because of the history that it has. But like I said at committee, I think that we, the nature of our job is we deal with these kind of things and we are, we have very great team of staff who work all the time to make sure that they're ahead of, you know, some of the things that are going to come forward. And I think that we have a lot of smart people around here to make sure that we can make sure that we're doing the right thing on behalf of our community. And there are so many other municipalities that are doing it that we can learn from. And I personally have spent a lot of time looking into this specific policy. I can even tell you right now that I know some of the cities that have had to reject certain things that could have gone to a legal matter but didn't make it there because they were basing it on the foundation of the values that they had as a municipality. And I believe that as the City of London, we do have a good set of values that we stand on, and I don't think that we're going to be doing anything that's going to go against the values that we have. And our community looks for that leadership. Where's the leadership going in this city? Is the leadership, what kind of values do we have? What kind of principles do we stand on? And that's where we build our community as leaders. That's what makes us leaders in this community. So I want to thank all my colleagues who have taken the time to look into this, to connect with different members of the community. Thank you to my colleague Morgan, who reached out to different various members of our community to talk to them and to understand the importance of the proclamation policy, the importance of feeling like you have the support from the leadership of your own city and you feel welcome and included. So I won't speak too much on it. I look forward to seeing what's going to come forward, to see how we can do it as a city and we can prepare to address all of the concerns that we all have here. And I know that we're doing it in good faith. No one's doing it to harm anyone in our community. Everything that we do is for the greater good of our community. So thank you, everyone, for supporting this, and I look forward to you supporting the next report that's going to come forward. Thanks.
You'll certainly see what that report looks like, but this one, what we have now is this item on the floor, so I'll turn your attention to the screen as we vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 14 to 1.
Counselor Kayabaga?
And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, I note the time is 6:26. With your indulgence, I'm going to see how far we get along on the first report of the Planning Environment Committee. And depending on how well we go through that, we may break partway through, noting that we're close to 6:30. Counselor Cassidy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Your Worship. I have not heard from anybody about pulling anything, so I will put the entire report on the floor. How's that for efficient?
Holy smokes. Does anyone wish to have any of these items dealt with separately? Counselor Turner?
If I may, a question just before we do that is with respect to the Urban Design Peer Review Panel, there is going to be some review with respect to the terms of reference on the conflict of interest component. I wasn't sure if there had been amendments proposed prior to us arriving here or if that is moving forward as it had been brought forward at planning.
Any comments on that? Through you, Chair.
Through you, Worship. So we did have a review. We have had conversations with the clerk's office, and at this point in time, there is no amendments proposed.
So do you wish that dealt with separately then? Because if you'd rather have it dealt with in broad discussion, then we'll do that. And I'll come back to you. All right. All right, thank you. Anyone wish to deal with anything separately? Okay, then seeing none. We'll look for discussion. I think we have Counselor Turner and then Counselor Hopkins. Please.
If we've pulled that other item, number 16, separately, then just really quickly, I just want to speak to the Eve group proposal for development adjacent to the West Five subdivision. If you've taken a look at your package, you'll recognize a very innovative building design. West Five is built to be a net zero community and totally sustainable.
Sir, I'm going to, if we're going to deal with that separately, then we'll let you talk to it separately. I apologize, I thought you said you wanted it pulled.
Your Worship, that's correct. Another item I wish pulled. I'm talking to the balance of the report and just making a brief comment.
There you go then. Yep, got it.
Thank you. Yes, and anyway, I just wanted to observe that not only is this another developer in an adjacent to the West Five subdivision, the principles and concepts that were espoused in West Five are now being taken on by other developers and looking for very innovative and very low-impact, minimum-impact developments. And I'd like to applaud them. I think it's worthy of pulling out separately and mentioning.
So noted, thank you very much. And sorry for that earlier confusion because we're discussing everything with the exception of item 16. Counselor Hopkins?
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you, Counselor Turner, for making those comments. I'd like to also make a comment on this Eve development, which is happening in my ward. And I know we had a public participation meeting, and there was some neighbors out with their concerns about how this intensity, the loss of privacy, and the traffic and the congestion. And I just, since I have you all together here as a group, want to talk about the challenges when we do these infill. How we balance the community's concerns is always a concern for me. I know with this development, it is quite an exciting development in the West Five, sustainable, net-zero community. It's really something that is very innovative. If you read the recommendation, we'd made a slight adjustment asking that through the Site Plan Authority process, that the cycling committee would be addressed as to how we store bikes. We are looking at, in this development as well, with car sharing and carpooling, and it's all about that. It's really something that I think we really have to take a look at what the future of development is going to look like. And like Counselor Turner said, how other developers are picking up on what's happening in the West Five development. I know the applicant is here as well, who is very, very invested in developing here in the City of London, so would encourage all of you to support this development.
Thank you. Counselor Morgan?
Yes, I'm going to make a comment on 3.4, which is number 18 on the agenda. This is a public participation meeting for a development in my ward near Aldersbrook Gate. In the public consultation comments, of which I watched the meeting on the video, it was mentioned that they have been in touch with the mayor, we have been in touch with the councillor, Josh Morgan, and to date, there has been nothing and nothing but frustrating for the residents. So I will correct the record on that. That's not true at all. In fact, over the course of the last few months, I and Ms. Schur and our transportation staff have been working with the residents on trying to address their issues. The process we're currently in is everyone on that street has been invited to submit their ideas on what they would like to see done that would mitigate the problems that they have on their street to us through me, and it's been passed on to Ms. Schur and her staff. They are in the process of updating a number of studies in the area so that they can provide a robust comment on each and every one of the ideas that the residents on that particular gate have. We may not be able to solve their issues. We may not be able at the end of it to find a solution that is amicable to them, but I certainly don't want it to be reflected on us or our staff that we are doing nothing on this. We are actually in the process of doing something quite substantial and hopefully we'll find some common ground on addressing what is a very difficult situation. I mean, by today's planning standards, we would never put houses on an access point to a neighborhood subdivision like that. Thousands of people need to access through that access point into the neighborhood, and there's about 18 people on the street who are severely impacted by that access point. So we're going to see what we can do, but certainly because it was part of the public comments and public record, I did want to correct that on behalf of myself and the staff who are working on this item. But I'm certainly going to support moving forward on this.
Thank you. Any other questions with respect to the Planning Environment Committee, less item 16? Counselor Lewis?
Thank you, Worship, and I just want to very briefly thank the committee and all the staff for the work that went into item 17. That's the rezoning on 21 Norland Ave to include farm gate sales. I am very, very familiar with the work that Urban Roots does on that property. It is a great thing for the city, and moving this forward will be very helpful to their continuing to prosper and succeed in years to come in providing good, local, urban agriculture to folks who need it, as well as educating our youth and involving the not-for-profit sector and the for-profit business sector as well.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, back to you, Counselor Cassidy.
I think everybody's said enough.
It has been so moved, then I will turn your attention to the screen as we vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to 0.
Counselor Cassidy?
So I will put item 16, and that, as Counselor Turner mentioned, is the Urban Design Peer Review Panel Terms of Reference Update.
Comments or questions? Counselor Turner?
Thank you, Worship. Stood a little prematurely there, my apologies. Just as we discussed at the planning committee, one of the questions that I had was with respect to the terms of reference in the Urban Design Peer Review Panel, specifically about the conflict of interest components. I recognize that a previous draft said to respect the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act and the provisions within that. This goes a little bit beyond that, which makes sense because there's some professional obligations and considerations with that. One of them, however, my question was about the adjudication of conflicts in the draft that was presented to us, that any complaints or adjudication of conflicts would be done by council. As mentioned in the terms, I'd asked at the time if perhaps the municipal integrity commissioner might be in a more appropriate avenue to investigate those. And the decision at that time was that between that meeting and now, there would be some investigation into that and perhaps some explanation of what the most appropriate route would be. So through you, Worship, to staff, if I might.
Why don't we get a staff thought on this, Mr. Kostas?
So I could take a try at this, and maybe the clerk can help me as well. But in terms of the conflict of interest, the rationale behind what we've put into the Urban Design Terms of Reference, sorry, Terms of Reference, is basically the same language used in section 4.2, one of the General Policy for Advisory Committees. So that's what we based it on. The only difference really being is that the matter is typically filed with the city clerk. We replace the city clerk with the Director of Development Services, who's responsible for the panel. So that's the subtle change. But really, we just use the General Policy for Advisory Committees. That's the difference.
Counselor Turner?
Thank you. I appreciate that. So specifically with respect to the adjudication of conflicts in the advisory committees, that would be council term to do, I guess it doesn't seem like it's the appropriate venue for that.
Clerk?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. You're correct. The advisory committees, the members have to decide for themselves if they have a conflict of interest. The advisory committee is a code of conduct. I think that's what Mr. Kostas is referring to. If a member is in violation of the code of conduct, in the advisory committee situation, the complaint would come to me. I would investigate. If I felt that the person needed to be removed, then I would report that to council, and council would make the final decision. But you're right, we do not advise the advisory committees if they have a conflict of interest. That's within their own prerogative to do that.
Counselor?
Thank you. So if I might just expand, why in this terms would it be, fall on council to make the adjudication on the conflicts and not perhaps the Integrity Commissioner, for example?
Let's try the clerk again.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I did provide concerns to Development Services staff regarding this, and since it's their report, the recommendation had to come through them. That's all I can say.
Counselor?
Perhaps through you to Mr. Kostas.
Mr. Kostas?
So, sorry. So the complaint is, and in this case, we've put it not to the city clerk, but we've changed the city clerk to the Director of Development Services, who may determine if there is no contravention of the panel conduct, that the contravention occurred and although the member took all reasonable measures to prevent it. So there's a whole series that the director could do, and we felt that that was appropriate. If council wishes that it go to another body, an adjudicating body, other than council and it be Integrity Commissioner, we're open to that. We're at the will of council.
Counselor Chair?
Thank you, Worship. I wasn't sure what, my apologies to Counselor Squire, because I don't have a motion that I pre-circulated, hadn't anticipated this answer, I suppose. My amendment would be that the council be removed and the Integrity Commissioner be inserted in its place. The rationale for that being that this is a professional board that provides recommendations and oversight into matters that relate to planning applications and development applications, and those are fairly significant in the business of the city. I consider this different to be from an advisory committee and just providing advice. It has some fairly significant impact on the consideration of recommendations as they come before us.
So that's a motion from Counselor Turner, that this be referred rather than to council, then to the Integrity Commissioner, if I can edit down. Is there a second for that motion? Counselor Kayabaga? Comments or questions? Counselor Squire?
I have concerns about this. I think there's, I understand the logic, but I, with all due respect, I'm not sure the logic is accurate. I think the Integrity Commissioner is there because we're not reporting to anyone except the people who vote for us, and it's, we created the office of that to deal with issues of conflict of interest and other matters of our code of conduct, and there's no one else to deal with us other than an Integrity Commissioner. And we decide, and it used to be it was the ombudsman, now it's the Integrity Commissioner. Now what we seem to be saying is that, well, a body that reports ultimately through our committees to council will now have matters of their conflicts of interest adjudicated by someone who was not created or set up to perform that function. I would suggest maybe is not the appropriate body, appropriate person to do that. My major concern is I don't want to do this on the fly at council. I really think somebody, we need a legal opinion. Mr. Card's looking down, it's like, oh, no. I think we have to be careful, and my point always about the motions is no need to apologize, is it leads us to doing things on the fly, on the moment. And I have concerns about doing this, just as we are. So if the council was amenable, I think it should be referred back for legal to have a look at it and say whether it's right or wrong. He's nodding because he knows how smart I am and right I am.
Well, Counselor Squire, you are certainly something. So in the spirit, in the spirit of that, are you comfortable with that, Counselor? So in the spirit, in the spirit of that, are you comfortable with that, Counselor Turner?
Your worship, with respect to Counselor Squire, yes, I am. The rationale here is that the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, the provisions are identified in the, in the terms, and the adjudicant for municipal conflict of interest act violations is the Integrity Commissioner under the act. So that's why I'd refer it there, but I think it's quite appropriate to send it back to, I'd hoped that it could have been resolved between the committee and council so that we wouldn't have to discuss it here, but I think a referral back would be the most appropriate.
Sounds like wisdom may prevail. So in the spirit of that, I'm not sure there's any other discussion. It's a referral back to staff. Then to Premier Halmer.
I hesitate to weigh in on it. I do think we're talking about a fairly remote circumstance. I mean, I'm not sure how often the issue around conflict of interest has come up, where there's been a dispute, and then it's had to come up to anyone to be adjudicated. This is a very small panel of reasonable people who I think can follow the rules. So I'm a little hesitant to hold up the whole thing, just to sort out, you know, where do we do, deal with the adjudication. My preference might be to pass it and then have an amendment that comes forward in the future if we want to change it. Because, you know, I don't know about like just putting the whole thing on hold. There's a lot of great work that's been done in terms of the Terms of Reference. I kind of share Counselor Turner's concern about how that's going to be dealt with, if there are these things that need to be adjudicated, but I don't really think we're going to have one in the next month or two. So, you know, I guess it could happen, but it seems very unlikely. So I wonder if the better approach is to just pass it and then have an amendment that comes forward, instead of we're going to change just one part. Because I think overall, it's very good work, and I know our staff are kind of eager to have it in place to carry on the work of the Urban Design Peer Review Panel.
There, the amendment still stands on the floor to refer it back to staff for consideration. We've heard a view contrary, but that is what is on the floor currently. Any other comments or questions on the amendment? Why don't you sum it up then, Counselor Turner? Please.
Thanks. My apologies to throw a wrench in all of this. It's one of very much wonk kind of thing. If the, if the terms need to move forward in order to maintain the integrity of the panels so that they can continue to exist and do their work pending us sorting out this part, then fair enough, I think, then it would be fair for us to pass it at this point and seek an amendment afterwards. If not, if the committee continues to do its work notwithstanding a change in the Terms of Reference, then I don't see any impact in referring the terms back to take a look at that amendment.
Thank you for that. You've shared two different thoughts in the same expression, but I would tell you that the issue here with us colleagues is to consider the amendment as revised, moved by Counselor Turner and seconded by, I apologize, seconded by Counselor Kayabaga. Thank you very much. So with that, we've just had a wrap on it. We'll turn your attention to the screen as we vote. This is the referral. Yeah, this is the referral we're voting on. The wrap's been done, Counselor Hopkins, so now we're going to vote, unless you have a point of clarification. Yes, please.
Thank you, your worship, and it's a question that I need to know before I vote, and it's a question through you to staff, to city clerk. By referring this back, are we stopping the work of the committee?
Clerk, why don't you take a thought of that, unless Mr. Kostas would like to, please?
Through, through your worship, there's been a lot of great work done on this, and I think you heard that at the PEC committee, there's been a lot of consultation, and it's actually a very good news story. I think this, by moving this forward and advancing it, we're able at least to solidify the Terms of Reference and continue to move forward with the panel. I wouldn't say it stops anything, but I guess from a staff perspective, it would probably be preferable to adopt it with a, with a direction to staff to come back in Q1 with amendments with respect to the actual issues that Counselor Turner is raising.
That's interesting, but it is not on the floor, so if we wish to reconsider it on that basis, we defeat this referral, and then it can be reconsidered into the secondary. So with that, colleagues, depending on what your wish is, referred back or defeat this, and then an amendment could be then reconsidered to return this back in Q1. We turn your attention to the screen as we vote. Counselor Cassidy.
Yes, I just want to speak to the main motion, your worship. I just want to point out as, as.
Sorry, it's been referred.
Oh, sorry?
It's been referred.
Oh, so that, so we're done? Okay, sorry.
We're kind of done.
It was a great update, that's all I'll say. So I get to sit down?
Yes, you can.
That's my report. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you very much, and thank you for that, Counselor Cassidy. I'll turn us to the first report in closed session. Counselor Hillier, please. This is a short-term tradition, I want you to know.
That was good. First report in council in closed session, that on the recommendation of the Managing Director, Corporate Services and City Treasurer, Chief Financial Officer, on the advice of the Manager of Realty Services, with respect to the city-owned industrial land containing 9.3 acres, more or less subject to survey, located on the west side of Robins Hill Road, being composed of part of Block 3, Plan 33M-615, as outlined on the sketch, here to as Appendix B. The offer submitted from NMB Properties and Investments Limited, the purchaser, to purchase the subject property from the city at a purchase price of $651,000, reflecting the sale price of $70,000 per acre, here to as Appendix C, be accepted, subject to the following conditions. That on the recommendation of the Acting Director of Human Resources, the Civic Administration, be directed to undertake all administrative acts that are necessary in order for the mayor and the city clerk to obtain the necessary authorization to execute the collective agreement for the years 2019 to 2022, appended in Appendix B to the staff report dated December 3, 2019, pursuant to the memorandum of agreement dated September 26, 2018, Appendix A, between the Corporation of the City of London and Local Union 101, Canadian Union of Public Employees, QP Local 101. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, this is your secondary. Counselor Turner.
Your worship, I'd just like to identify a peculiar conflict with respect to the item where QP 101's contract had been ratified, as I'm the supervisor of QP 101 employees with Middlesex Land and Health.
So noted, thank you very much. I will look for a secondary, please. Counselor Lewis, any other comments or discussion? Seeing none, I'll turn your attention to the screen as we vote.
Just for clarification on the screen, I see number one, are we, have we separated them out?
Yes, we, just to be clear, we have separated that out, so the issues with respect to Local 101 will be dealt with separately.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to 0.
So since you're still standing, Counselor Hillier, on this, we, thank you, we are dealing with the item with respect to QP 101. And I'll look for a secondary for that, please. Counselor Cassidy, any other comments or discussion noting that we have a conflict? So noted. Then I'll turn your attention to the screen as we vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 14 with one recuse.
Thank you, colleagues. There are no deferred matters, no inquiries, nor emergent motions, so I'll turn your attention to the bylaws, and we are going to be looking for a mover and secondary for introduction and first, and first reading of Bills 1 and 2, 4 through 23, and added Bill 25. The other two items, just for your purpose, colleagues, are Bill Number 3 and Bill Number 24, which will be called together and separately due to Counselor Turner's conflicts. And so we'll look for a mover. Counselor Van Holz, seconded by Counselor Lehman. Thank you. We call the vote. Colleagues, I'm looking for a mover and secondary for second reading of Bills 1 and 2, 4 through 23, and added Bill 25. Moved by Counselor Van Mirberg, and seconded by Counselor Hopkins. Any discussion? I'm sorry.
I see you never looked towards the right anymore.
We'll get you the next time around.
No comment on that one.
No comment. But is there any other comment that anyone wishes to make? Seeing none, I'll call your attention to the screen as we vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to 0.
Colleagues, and now I'm looking for a mover and secondary for third reading and enactment of Bills 1 and 2, 4 through 23, and added Bill 25, moved by Counselor Hillier, seconded by Counselor Lewis. I'll turn your attention to the screen as we vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to 0.
Thank you very much, colleagues. We now have Bill Number 3 and added Bill 24. We're looking for a mover and secondary for introduction and first reading of those bills, moved by Counselor Lehman, seconded by Counselor Hopkins. We call the vote. Colleagues, I'll look for a mover and secondary for second reading of Bill Number 3 and added Bill Number 24. Counselor Saleh, seconded by Counselor Lewis. Any discussion? Seeing none, we call the vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 14 with one recuse.
Thank you, and now I'll look for a mover and secondary for third reading and enactment of Bill Number 3 and added Bill Number 24. Is there a mover? Counselor Pelosi, seconded by Counselor Hillier. We call the vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 14 with one recuse.
Colleagues, that's most of the formal part of our agenda. A few things, as is our custom, and is totally appropriate to thank the staff. This is, as we all know, our last committee or council meeting of the year, so to thank the staff for what has been, I think, a tremendous year, great support on your part. And may I say to the gallery, to our, through the gallery and through staff, but certainly to colleagues, it's been a great 12 months and 10 days for all of us, and I think that speaks to the goodwill that has been, that has been put around this table for all issues affecting this community, and certainly the citizens of London appreciate what you do. I think in the spirit of that, on Friday, you are welcome to join Counselor Kayabaga and me Friday afternoon from Fort 07 for the section of Dundas Place, it's going to be opened up. That's going to be kind of a nice little party. We invite you all to be there. And with that, we'll do a hand vote as I look for a mover to adjourn. Counselor Van Mirberg, and seconded by Deputy Mayor Halmer. All those in favor, that's adjourned, thank you very much.
Merry Christmas, guys.
And merry Christmas and happy holidays to all.